There we go, we'll just start. We only have one person trying to get in, but that is all good. Hope they've changed their mind, they're gone.
Oh no.
So Hung, are you in Chicago? Or I know Linda, you're in Chicago, right?
Yes, Linda and I are both here.
Ah, very good, okay. So you've been enjoying our 70-degree weather?
This is the last day.
Right, exactly. And Jen and Naomi, where are you out of? Where is your base?
We're in Minneapolis and it's snowing here, so I don't really want to hear about 70 degrees.
We did have a bakery just put on, I think it was Facebook or Instagram, like hurry and come get your sweets now before the smoke starts. So are you getting a big storm?
Uh, no, there's like a dusting, but it's coming down pretty good. We kind of already had a big one already, which is weird for October, but.
Go figure, 2020.
It just goes with the deal, I guess.
Exactly, exactly. Hi Kara, how are you? Hopefully she can hear and see us. And then we have about three minutes and then we'll just get started. You think I'd have Zoom all figured out, but I'm pretty sure everyone will come on muted. But what's nice when we have a small group like this is we do get a chance to sort of see who's in the crowd and say hello and where are they from and where their bakeries are and that kind of thing, so.
And if they use Plugra.
I'm sorry?
And if they use Plugra.
Right. We can ask that in the chat on the side if you'd like. Brianna, that's a lovely cake that you're holding in your picture. I don't know if anybody can hear me. I hope they can, we're about to start, so I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Hi Paul.
Hey Bernadette, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good thanks. They're building our arena.
Oh, very good. Did it just start?
They put the last beam in a couple of weeks ago.
Very good.
And closed the whole thing.
Now how close is that to the bakery?
Two miles, just about, mile and a half.
Okay.
And we're on the same road and everything.
Very good. Now if they just go back and start playing with crowds, that'd be great.
One, one day soon, hopefully.
Right, exactly, exactly. So I am gonna just get started. I know we just have a minute before two o'clock. Actually, we're right on the nose, two o'clock, very efficient here at the RBA. So for those on the call who I have not yet met, my name is Bernadette. I'm the Director for the Retail Bakers of America. And we're the National Association for Retail Bakeries. And what we do is we provide education, we provide certification, we do a lot of networking, so all of these crazy times of 2020, it's nice to know that you're not just living in your own vacuum, that there are many, many bakeries doing the same thing and going through all of the same things that you are. And that's really what we try to provide. We are like the conduit for all of you all across the country to sort of get together, network, what's working, what's not working, throw ideas. Especially, like I said, right now in 2020. So we're very excited to have the Plugra team with us today and their marketing team to talk about social media. This is a hot topic with our bakers and you know, what we've heard from a lot of our bakers is some do it really well. And we know who those bakers are because they're everywhere. And then there are some that could really use the help. So hopefully, after this hour is over and we share this recorded video, we'll really be able to give people some tangible things that they can go back to their bakery and really sort of, you know, put things in action right away. Those are those are the best things that we can do for our bakers right now. So I'd like to introduce Hung, who is with the marketing team at Plugra, and he is going to give us a little bit of an intro on Plugra butter.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Hung Tran. I'm currently the Associate Brand Manager for Plugra. I work for Dairy Farmers of America. That's one of the good, great brands we have in our portfolio. As far as the brand itself, if you currently don't use it or are not really aware of it, it's an extra creamy butter through a slow churning process and it creates an optimal moisture to butter fat ratio in terms of 82% butter fat versus the standard 80%. And the result out of that, what you get is a flakier pie crust, crispier cookies, and then just in general more flavorful sauces. We have a prominent position in the food service industry and we also are growing our retail portfolio as well. As far as our brand, we are actually the official butter of Chicago's French pastry school. And we're also in collaboration with the James Beard House for New York. And a recent addition with Bernadette's group for RBA, and we're excited to be here to work this session with you. I have here Linda Hall, who's our culinary consultant for strategy. And we also have Jen Boils and Naomi Osborne, who are working for a creative content agency that will be leading this session. So I'll go ahead and pass it to Jen.
Awesome. Hi guys, thank you so much for joining us today. We're really excited to be doing this training now and we had just a great time putting everything together. Obviously, we love baking and sweets like everyone and have been kind of knee-deep in that world with Plugra for the last year. And so my agency basically helped to create the social content and the strategy behind Plugra, you know, over the last year. So you might see a little bit of our content in our document and let me just try to start up here our presentation. Share my screen. See. Oh, it's actually saying Bernadette, the preferences don't allow it. So hold on one second, I'm fixing that.
So I think, I think I did. I think I made you the host. So hopefully, hopefully that helps.
Yeah, let's see if I can do that. Here we go.
Perfect.
I think you're now screen sharing. Can you guys see?
We sure can, thank you.
My messy desktop. Okay, so I've been Boils. I would like to introduce Naomi. She's a social strategist with JBD on my agency. And we've been working together with JBD for three years. And I started the agency after a long career as a content director with one of the largest agencies in Minneapolis. And my passion has always been social. So today, we're actually going to be talking about, we came up with kind of a snappy headline here, so five essential ingredients to social media success, kind of putting things in in the baking, baking world a little bit. And so really, we're just really excited to be here. So we're kind of going through introductions, but so I'm Jen. I founded JBD three years ago, like I said. I was also a journalist for 15 years in the entertainment world, working for the Alt Weekly here in Minneapolis. And then I have a bulldog and a toddler who basically rule my world and make it hard for me to work any given day here at home. I'll throw it to Naomi and she can tell you a little bit about herself.
Hey guys, I'm super happy to be here. We've been loving working with Plugra and just, I have a personal passion for the category myself. I was a super creative kid and was like this close to going to pastry school when I was younger. So I have a lot of respect for what bakers do and what they bring to their community and putting this presentation together was a real honor for me personally. So I hope you guys learn a lot from it and we can just get going.
Cool. So the things that my agency specializes in, just to quickly give you an overview, is we do strategy, execution, we do things like social audits at the front of working with any brand where we look at kind of the lay of the land and what the brands have done and how we can learn from what they've done. We do creative content training, like we're doing now, storytelling, and we work on audience development as well for paid media. Those are kind of our specialties. We would love to kind of get to know you guys too, so we can make sure that we're addressing your concerns and how we can help you. And so we would really like to kind of go around, if that's not too weird, and ask everybody if you're, if you're using social media currently and what platforms have been working or not for you, and overall, how you feel social's been going. I think if we could just take quick, like three, four minutes to just kind of go around the room and, and address that a little bit, it'll help us as we go through the rest of the presentation. Anybody want to go first?
I mean, I know we're on the association side, but I can tell you what we use and how we use it. So we are on all platforms. I think the only one we're not on right now is TikTok. And that's because I'm not a great dancer. So we are on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, Twitter. All of our social media has grown quite a bit over the last few years. And I think that's because we're trying to be a little bit more consistent with what we put out there and try and keep on-brand when we do things. So Facebook for us, I think, is the most, the one that gets the most, you know, traction. And I'd say Twitter probably after that, and then Instagram. Instagram is actually growing more for us because it's obviously such a visual platform.
Yep, that makes sense. Anybody else want to pitch in or join in that conversation quick?
Oh, no, go ahead Lynn.
I'm Lynn Sherman. I do work for RBA as the Education Director, but I also own a bakery in Minnesota. And we're in Cold Spring, Minnesota. So if you guys are in Minneapolis, you're not too far away. We mostly use Facebook and we use some Instagram. The biggest problem is running out of time to try and be on all of the different platforms. And you know, I've got two people that usually are putting the Facebook posts on, but when we get busy, you know, if we haven't taken the time ahead of time to kind of plan them out and get them set up, then we get busy and we just run out of time to post things when we should be putting more on.
Yep, that makes sense. The common issue. Anyone else is going to say something?
I will. My name is Kara. I have a bakery in Flower Mound, Texas. So we are on most, most platforms, honestly, we are on Instagram, Facebook, Pinterest, Twitter. We actually have a Snapchat that we don't really use it that much and a TikTok, but we don't really use it that much. Instagram and Facebook are probably the biggest for us. We've been on Facebook for the, we've been in business for almost 10 years and have been on Facebook the whole time. We post every single day, what we made for the day. So it's been probably the most effective or where we get probably even the most feedback. I've also got Katie in here, she does my marketing for me. So I also have somebody on staff that does my social media marketing for me. And so that's a huge help. If nobody else has that, that's amazing to have. She schedules all of our posts and does all of that. So yeah.
Okay, anyone else want to say anything about their, what they're doing on social before we move on? Three, two, one. Okay, so thank you guys for sharing that. It's really helpful to hear. I'm actually pretty impressed that you guys are on so many platforms and you're kind of testing what, what works. So I think that's great. And we will have a Q and A at the end. So if you have any questions that you, you know, you're just burning to ask, or if anything comes up as we go through, feel free to stop us and talk to us as we're going through, or you can save them for that Q and A at the end. One second here. So we, Hung already introduced, you know, Plugra butter a little bit, but so this is just kind of in there to show you a little bit more about the butter. You know, as you mentioned, it's a European-style butter. It's very much highly favored by bakers and chefs. It improves consistency of baked goods. There's less waste. It actually translates to more fat in French, which I've always thought was cool. And like Naomi mentioned, we have been using it now for the better part of a year, year and a half, and won't be going back. So we hope that you guys become familiar if you haven't already. And we really can't say enough good things about it. This here is just a little bit of a showcasing of our work with Plugra and some of the stuff that we've done in terms of content. We've been highly focused on studio content and just beautiful imagery as well as kind of brand consistent, you know, text imagery as you see here, engaging content like challenges to fans, things like that, recipes. Linda's been great at helping us with that. And kind of making sure that there are recipes on social as well as the website. We started working with Plugra in August of 2019. And you can see that there's a little bit of a graph here at the bottom. And you can see that we each sort of hill or mountain there represents times that we launched content or, or launched a challenge or so it's interesting if you can, if you can get a tool that measures this stuff, you can actually see your efforts and what, you know, what's working. And we'll talk about insights in a little bit, but all the tools usually offer, you know, in-platform insights that you can look at as well. Over this last year, we were able to increase followers by, you know, 6,000%. We started on Instagram with, I think, 800 followers and we're now up to almost 4,000. We increased engagement by 19,000% impressions, link clicks, which are really important for any brand that has a website and is selling product. So I think the bottom line is that social works if you take the time for it and you, and you do it well. And I think that efforts can scale from when, like when you have someone maybe on your staff or when you're doing it alone. If you start doing social and it's doing really well, you can always scale it up or scale it down. But I think the important piece is that what you do, you do well. So what we're going to cover today is kind of listed here in this table of contents. We're going to talk about social fundamentals. You know, you guys, we talk in terms of kind of all these marketing terms all the time, and I want to make sure that if we say anything that you don't understand, that you stop us and and ask for a definition, because we try not to kind of go into our marketing speak world too much with these, but we're going to talk about those fundamentals quick. We're going to talk about what social can drive, about misconceptions. I think there's a lot of misconceptions in social because it moves so fast and because it changes so fast. So we'll go through a few of those. And then we'll get into kind of the meat of our presentation, the five ingredients. If we really had to boil down, how do you do social effectively? These are the five ingredients, so to speak, that you need. And we'll spend a little bit of time on each of those. We also want to talk about community management or kind of customer fan engagement and management on social, so comments, things like that. Because those are a big deal. And we often hear that business owners don't have the time to do those, and we definitely understand that. So we've got a little bit of a lay of the land there. And then we're going to show you some things that we do when we create social strategies for brands and businesses. Just some really easy slides that you could take home and, and write for yourself, just to make sure that you've got a good foundation for going forward. And it's okay to start over at any time and just say, okay, we're going to start today with this new strategy. And we're going to, this is our go-forward plan. And we've done that a lot. So there's no shame in that at all. And then we'll go into that audience Q and A. So first, we want to talk about the fundamentals. We know social is important. We already kind of showed you those metrics that we've even been able to drive for Plugra. We also know that it drives SEO and search when you have it in play and you've got your, your profile links similarly named and it's, you're easy to find. That would help people when they're searching for you on the web. Obviously, it drives website traffic. You saw the metric that we talked about earlier with Plugra, that we were able to increase link clicks by 400 something percent. So that's really important too. We want to make sure that both web and social are talking together. That's just part of like a good, what we call ecosystem. Insights and engagement, we showed you a little bit of that too earlier. It's really important to test what's, what's working. And oftentimes, the actual engagement on a post isn't, it is only part of the story. You want to kind of delve into those platform insights, you know, Facebook insights, for example, and, and actually know where to look and see how things have been moving, not just on likes and comments, although that's a good marker. And then retention for inspiration to purchase. You know, having content that you're posting regularly not only gives fans a reason to stay on the page, but it brings new fans in. And so those are two things that are, that are really important. And obviously, all this delicious content that we're posting, the point of it is to inspire people to want to come and buy our goods, right? So that's a huge part of it and is a big reason why brands are on social at all. I've often, you know, in my career, I've worked with everyone from, you know, banks to household name brands to, you know, whatever. And I, I remember working with a bank once and they said, they were very much, did not want to use social. And I had many meetings where I tried to convince them and finally, we all came to the agreement that it's actually, you pay a bigger price when you don't use it, because fans are actually looking to find you. And if they don't find you, they'll find a competitor. So that, that isn't meant to be a threat really, but it's just meant to kind of show you that, that there's a way to do it, way to do it well, and that's necessary. There's a few misconceptions, you know, I talked about how social moves so fast, you know, everything from changing algorithms to even platform redesigns to, you know, Facebook changing how many people will actually see what you post if you don't pay for it. So I want to just walk through some of those misconceptions. So first misconception is that people will see what you post when you post it. That used to be the case in early Facebook years. And then in 2014, they actually changed it and introduced an algorithm. And the algorithm was honestly made for those platforms to be able to monetize brands posting content there. And so only 2% of your current fans and followers will see content that you post to your timeline. And it's, so it's really important, that's what we call organic posting. We'll get into paid posting in a little bit, but I think it's important to notice, to note that you need kind of both. I will explain why in our content section. So it's the, the number of followers it reaches is between 2 and 10%, and 10 is on the very high end. Secondly, that you have to be on every platform. You guys that talked about that you're on TikTok and, and Snapchat and some of those younger platforms, really good for you. We haven't really delved into those with Plugra because we're focusing intently on Instagram and Facebook right now. But it is, it is good to have those platforms and, and have those profiles, even if you're deciding not to be active right away because you can claim your name and make sure that no one else grabs it. But it's okay to focus on one or two platforms, or even one platform if that's easiest for you. The, the main part is to just, whatever you do, do it right and well. Thirdly, you have to invest a ton of time into social. It seems like that on the onslaught, but if you actually think about having a process and some rules around social, and even if you plan in advance, it can be really easy. I think Lynn was talking about scheduling posts and having somebody that does that, that's really helpful as well. And there's easy tools even in the platforms that you can use to schedule out your content. People only want free stuff. You know, we see that whenever we do giveaways and challenges and things like that. And we'll talk about, you know, we call value-adding content later. But they also want to be included in the brand. They want to be brought in. They want to know that they're heard. And they want to know that their brand does good or is transparent, you know, all those good things. So it's not just that, but it's good to have something like a contest. And we'll show you the one that we did for Plugra as an example. It's good to have a mix of some of those things. And then also, some people think that you don't need to spend money to get seen on your platforms. And I wish that were the case. But if you want to move the needle in a meaningful way and bring new, new audiences in, new people, expose your brand to new fans, there really is a place for paid media. We'll talk about that in a second. And I don't want you to think that you need to spend like $500 a post or something like that, because that's not true at all. Facebook just wants, it's like paying the toll. Like they just want you, if you have a post that, let's say you made like a video for your brand, that obviously probably took a lot of money and time. You're going to want to make sure that you put, let's say, behind a video, maybe it's like $40 or something, to make sure that that video gets seen. If you let it run organically, again, that 2% of fans are, those are the only people that will see your content. So those are just, and I should say, paid is kind of like hitting the gas. And organic is kind of like idling. Organic again is just posting to the timeline and letting it just run for itself. Excuse me. So these are just some things that we wanted to talk about that kind of makes social a little bit challenging these days, but if you get those things down and you know them and you know how to plan around them, social can work really well. So we want to talk about audiences and content and all that stuff. So we're going to get to those fundamentals and then we're going to move into the, the five ingredients. And then our Q and A, but I want Naomi to maybe take over these next few slides and talk with you.
Yeah, sure, no problem. So I like to think about audiences as kind of the first stop to a fundamentally successful social plan. And knowing your audience is that key first step. And we've got a difference between our current audience and then what we call aspirational audiences. And that's just like, it helps in so many ways, platform differentiation and paid media. With platform differentiation, a lot of you guys know that, that means like, you know, a certain audience would be more drawn to an Instagram or to Facebook or to a Pinterest or something like that. And you find out those valuable things like via insights, which you can find for free, you know, on your actual pages. So those kind of things break down into demographics like location, age, things like that are huge indicators where you're kind of learning how to balance what your audience wants with your business objectives. And we'll talk more about paid media when we get to a slide that's specifically about that, but we just really, audience is the first thing that Jen and I look at when we talk to any brand, is, you know, who are we speaking to and how can we best speak to them?
And I'll say something about the platform differentiation piece. That's really at the heart of a social strategy. So an example would be, when we were working with Plugra, we found that was actually our, like, younger chef audience was on Instagram and some of the more kind of home, home bakers and cookers were, chefs were on Facebook. And so we started to, you know, adjust our content just slightly. Maybe it was just in the copy or a little bit in taking a, you know, some B-roll of an image, some, some alternate shots. And, and we were then able to test out was, did that, did it actually help when we created content a little bit separately for those platforms? It wasn't a big difference, but it was just a little bit. So like, for an example, the Instagram content won't ever presume like that the, that the fan there doesn't know a lot about baking. Whereas Facebook, we kind of maybe use the same imagery, but we're a little bit more introductory about how we talk there. And you guys can figure out if you have a little bit of that platform audience differentiation by, again, looking at your insights. And then in Facebook, there's a whole tab for it. And you can go in and look and make a date range as long as a year and try to see who are your demographics there, and then do the same for Instagram and start to kind of test that out a little bit. The main thing is how are you going to reach these audiences? And if they're the same across platforms, then that's, that's great. But I would, I would caution that Instagram tends to be more millennial. It tends to be a bit younger. And Facebook is definitely skewing older. So if you think about the needs of younger versus older and how you might adjust your content for that.
Yeah, definitely. Great remarks, Jen. So platforms, that's just exactly what Jen was talking about, you know. To the right here, we've got this handy guide that's sort of funny about, you know, what is the, the purpose of these platforms, you know, so which are best for your content? You know, we don't want you guys to spread yourself too thin. We encounter a lot of clients who are just feeling very overwhelmed at where they should put their energies. And we know that, you know, like Jen said earlier, it could even be one platform that you focus on. But for this, we want to talk more specifically about Facebook, Instagram, and Pinterest. Because we found with our work with Plugra, that's where a lot of bakers hang out and people who appreciate baking hang out. So we want to go and talk about those more so. Jen, next slide, please.
Yeah, well, I also wanted to say, when it comes to platforms and what they do best, this is actually, this donut chart is actually been floating around for a long time as a way to think about how each platform works. So Twitter is more like, I'm eating a hashtag donut, where Facebook is, I like donuts. Instagram is, here's an amazing photo of my donut. And LinkedIn is like, my skills include donut making or donut eating. So you can kind of understand that one size doesn't fit all. Every platform is used for something different. You know, Twitter, for example, right now is hot with political chatter and news and has been that way for a long time. Maybe that's not really a great place for, for baking community. Maybe it is more like Maybe it is more like Instagram if people are taking really gorgeous photos of their food. So you kind of get just a cheeky way that you can think about those platforms. Go ahead, Naomi.
Okay. So we like to include this with people because it's just really tactile, good information to use with these platforms. So I'm going to walk you guys through this just a bit. So the Facebook algorithm, it favors that human and engaging content. And, uh, it, it cues those to increase impressions. And what impressions means is that it shows up in people's feed. It doesn't necessarily mean it was clicked on or that it led to anything, but it does indeed go to, uh, go to feeds. Uh, the second bullet is punchy copy is best. We've seen this time and again, often I'll write something and then pare it down, uh, just to get it a little zippier, a little bit of an easier grab. Um, and it just makes it easier and resonates a little bit with people. So, um, posting a video and image, that saves two times more engagement. So, um, you know, we'll see people do just a plain status, no image, no nothing. And then just throwing a photo or throwing a video in there, it catches the eye. You know, you think about the way you yourself, uh, look at social and ingest social and what resonates. You know, those photo, photos and videos stick out. Uh, Facebook Live, you know, we want to talk about that a lot because that is definitely something that has surpassed it, uh, just being a trend, you know, Snapchat kind of ushered that into people, but we're really seeing that ephemeral content, AKA that disappearing content be such a great place, um, you know, for events, demos, it's a launch. Uh, maybe it's a part of a content series. We love that. Um, be human, you know, brands compete with their friends and family for attention. You don't have to feel like you're not yourself. You know, we're not talking about Twitter specifically with these platforms, but I heard someone else say they use it. Maybe that's, you know, maybe you're a person who likes to speak and who likes to talk and doesn't have a hard time coming up with what to say. You know, maybe Twitter is the way you go on that. Um, so it's all about just being human and being real to yourself uh, and balancing that with what the, um, the expectations are of people following your platforms. So the next one, upload all video to the feed natively into the platform. Don't use YouTube links. Uh, that means simply, uh, instead of just sharing it like from YouTube, you would actually upload it yourself, uh, copying the URL. Uh, the next one, tag other pages where appropriate. This is huge. You know, you want to kind of create that synergy with anyone else that you're doing. So, um, say if, uh, Pluga did something with, uh, a brand like Godiva or, um, Bob's Red Mill Flour or something else like that, we would definitely want to, uh, tag those guys, um, just to keep everything in synergy. And then that would be served to those pages followers as well. And, uh, last one, we want to limit the hashtags on Facebook because it's not really necessary for this platform. We only use them very, very rarely and mostly to provide context or for visual emphasis.
Actually, before we move on, does anybody have any Facebook specific questions or any questions on that about what we just talked through? Okay, cool.
Okay, so Instagram next. That's kind of a behemoth in the food world. Um, so first off, uh, we always want to ensure that the photography is clear and focused and editorial. We use the word editorial a lot in our line of work and, um, luckily these days, you know, we've got, we all have these iPhones and, uh, maybe you have an Android or something. Uh, it's easier than ever to kind of get that editorial photography, even if you're an amateur and kind of keep that going. So that's pretty cool. Um, 30% of Instagram users purchase something they first saw on Instagram. Now that is extremely interesting because, you know, we're trying to, you know, drive that, uh, the sales at the end of the day. So the use of hashtags, it's to gain reach or attention with these audiences. So we've got an example here. Baker Life, uh, and branded hashtags to track the participation, eat Pluga butter. So, you know, when we post for Pluga, one of our first hashtags will be Pluga butter. So anybody going there can see all of our lovely content. If we want to reach people in more of a niche audience who follow, say, Baker Life, uh, they would see our content and we'd possibly gain a fan from that. Uh, the third bullet says Instagram posts with at least one hashtag and emoji have 20% more engagement. You know, kind of a no brainer on that one. Uh, those hashtags, you know, are, I don't know how you guys use Instagram, but myself and many others will follow hashtags of interest to be served new content and to follow new people. And you want to be included in that, you, you and your business. So ad targeting is done with the same interface as Facebook and offers a similar audience targeting capabilities. Uh, Jen is going to talk more about that in the paid section, so I won't get too deep there. Us, Instagram stories is a must with more than 500 million daily active users. Sorry, Snap. Uh, we've talked about that a little bit ago, uh, as it retained a live, but stories is sort of a similar thing. And stories is a big part of what we do, uh, in a way of using content that maybe isn't as editorial for your page. Maybe it's content that somebody else took and tagged you in and you want to share it to kind of show that you're a part of the community and that you value your customers. And then that has a domino effect of setting people up to do that again and again. Cause it feels good to be shared, especially with a brand that you admire or that you really have loyalty to or care about. So we love stories, absolutely love stories. So that was kind of that next, uh, bullet with that off the cuff content. That's sort of what we call it. And then the live video works the same deal for those demos, Q and A. You know, maybe you're explaining, uh, you know, what the specials are, or maybe you're showing how to do something. You know, it depends. There are a lot of good opportunities there and I'm sure you all have, uh, accounts that you follow that handle that very well.
I also think that the live, um, aspect of social can be kind of intimidating. You know, I, I, we've done that for a few brands that we work on and it, it's kind of funny because they perfect and set up very, you know, in a studio and things like that. And that's not user expectation. When it comes to live and it comes to you doing like disappearing content, like stories, um, for Facebook or Instagram, users know, especially during the pandemic and things like that, that, um, that they're going to get a se, a bigger sense for what the brand is about behind the scenes. So I don't want you to be too afraid of going live and also know that when you go live, it alerts people more, much more than if you were to just post something. So, um, you know, we're, we love the idea of going live with an expert, um, you know, um, adding somebody. When you go live on Facebook, you can add somebody who is also a friend and you two can kind of talk. And, uh, maybe it's like you're making a recipe together or something. Just try to think about like what you would want to see and what you would want, um, to entertain you or help you if you were a fan watching from, from, uh, the sidelines.
I love that, Jen. And, um, just one more remark about live. It's such a great thing that we, we've seen it with people being home more. You know, there was a huge surge of people going live. And I think that kind of staying on top of those sort of, you know, I don't want to use the word trend because that sounds unsubstantial. But, um, you know, people are home more, so they kind of want to see live and they're more capable of going live. So just think about putting that into the fold. Okay, Pinterest. So, um, the ideal board title length is 26 characters or fewer. So again, you want to get in and be snappy, um, and just write like, you know, really rich keyboard titles and pin descriptions. And that'll kind of trigger the SEO. So that means that, you know, when people are searching, that you're more likely to come up. So descriptors can be as long as one or two sentences with helpful information or engaging call to action. Include a link with your pins. And, um, something that's kind of cool about Pinterest, if you're less of a social person, um, there's less one-on-one engagement. So you don't really need to incite comments or kind of play defense or anything that you often have to do on Facebook, which can be a little bit tiresome at times. Um, text and image work fine as long as it's not salesy. So this is a very editorial platform where it's important to not get too salesy with your stuff because people are more interested in kind of like aspirational living and how, uh, being the best version of themselves in some regard. So you don't want to get too salesy with it because it kind of, uh, detracts from like the heart of your message. And, uh, lastly, 96% of Pinterest users have tried new things from using the platform. So automatically people in that platform are kind of in that space. So it's a, it's a valuable platform to be on and quite enjoyable, especially if you're someone that likes to be, uh, inspired.
Now, we see a lot of boards like foods to try or recipes to try. You can kind of think of Pinterest like the shopping list. People are kind of bookmarking stuff that they want to do or try or buy. And so that's why it makes what we call conversion, you know, people that will actually buy something based on your efforts. Um, it makes that a lot higher and 96% of people have tried things there. That's a really high number. That's most people. Um, so that use the platform. So it's really helpful to know that. Hold on a sec. Go ahead, Naomi.
Yep. So best day and time to post. Um, I encourage you all to look at your insights to see where your exact followers are, but as a general rule, this is great. So Facebook, best time to post, Wednesday is 11 to 2. And that sort of reflects how people are at their desk, maybe, or they're at, uh, kind of a break midday. Um, I personally get a lot of engagement on my pages at about one o'clock on weekdays, especially on a Wednesday. Uh, because I find that people are sort of checking in on their socials after lunch. So for Instagram, best times to post Wednesday, 11 to 3, and then Sunday, 7 to 9. And that's sort of the same way when you think about the way people use social, even the way you use social, uh, you know, it makes sense. At our noon to nine, that's a large window, but that's sort of, you know, people use Pinterest in a lot of ways to kind of inspire themselves for the week or check recipes for the week. Uh, you know, just kind of utilize that time on the weekend to be inspired and to gather ideas. So it all, it all makes sense there.
Naomi.
Oh, go ahead, Naomi.
I did have a question about that based on, um, obvious time zone differences, right? Like there is, um, obviously a focus on your immediate community, right? But then, um, for those bakers that may ship product or just thinking through getting more exposure outside of just your time zone, is, is there a guidance to that?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Actually, that's a great, uh, thing that we should talk about. Um, like I said, you should sort of look at your followers as a way to post. And maybe, you know, with Facebook, that's, you're sort of generally talking to more locals at that point. So you could take that into account. Uh, we've had clients where we know the majority of them are on one coast or the other. And we kind of have to think about that a little bit and go, okay, um, when do we want to, you know, maybe we post a little early Minneapolis time. And then that would go, you know, post the right way for what, being on one of the coasts. Uh, and the scheduling software is super duper helpful for that. Um, or even scheduling within the platforms is helpful with that. Jen, do you have something to add on that?
Um, I was going to say for anybody that doesn't know, Naomi mentioned this a few times, but you can go into the insights tab on Facebook when you're logged in, you know, um, and as yourself and you're managing your Facebook. You go to insights, there's actually, uh, um, a dropdown that's like, um, type that you can go and look at. I think it's, um, engaged followers. And then there'll be a graphic under that that says best or time of day. And it will show you a graph about when your followers were more engaged. Um, and so sometimes it's a flat line and it's like, well, there's not really much there. But sometimes like what we have seen with Pluga is that we, with the pandemic, weekends have been skyrocketing for, for when people, our fans are online and engaging. And that makes sense if you think about, um, that's the time that you have to kind of do your baking or maybe you're more focused, especially in the pandemic, on work during, um, during your, your time at home and, or whatever your situation is. So, um, we just did a challenge for, with Pluga where we asked fans to, um, to, to submit their best, um, cookie photo, basically. And what, what we really thought was that people were going to engage throughout the week. But what really happened was that, um, a lot of the times the engagement would spike during the weekend because that was when people were baking at home. I think Bernadette mentioned earlier that with bakers, they're sometimes online at like 3:00 and 4:00 AM. So there might even be content that you do that's specific to being a baker that you decide to post really early in the morning. The main thing is to just think about who is the audience for this content and then think like them. When would they like to see this and think about their lifestyle? Um, and so, and a lot of the insights wouldn't, wouldn't really surprise you in that way. But it is good to kind of check in with those platforms. And these are really general times in terms of what works that it tends to be middle of the week in the afternoon. And then like Naomi said, I want to, and this is for organic engagement, I should say. Uh, if you're going to be doing paid engagement, it's getting served at all hours. So you don't necessarily really have to worry about it. Um, let's say you're going to be posting your specials of the day. You're not going to put paid behind that really because it's, it's got such a window. Um, it's that's specific to your day. Um, and so what, when's the best time to post something like that? Probably really early in the morning, um, you know, at the beginning of the week. Or even like, you could try and see, does Sunday night work better than Monday, um, you know, in the morning hours and just test that. And the main thing, and we'll talk about this at the end too, but doing these little tests and, uh, thinking like, okay, I'm going to try Sunday this week. And then I'm going to try Monday next week and see how it works out. That will give you good insights to be able to make these pivots that will work for your business. Am I going to talk through this, Naomi, or do you want to?
Um, you go ahead. I need a, a little water break here.
Okay, so content is so important. It's the what, right? So without content, social doesn't exist at all. And arguably without an audience, it doesn't either. But audiences are coming for the content. And so that's something that, um, is, is really at the heart of what we do and we're really, um, passionate and excited about content. Um, and I think a lot of brands and businesses we work with get very overwhelmed by the idea of, of content and needing to post frequently and things like that. But it's really easy to chip away at and there's really easy and kind of interesting tactics that you can use to help you, um, plan and not be so, so invested, um, you know, every minute of every day and have to be always on and, you know, things like that. So, um, really when it comes to content, we need to make sure that it's bridging the needs of you, you guys as a business, but also your customers. So like something like us posting a specials board, for example, that's helpful for you because it gets the information out to your customers. And it's helpful for your customers because then they can know what to expect before they come into the bakery instead of just kind of wild carding it and, and, you know, um, not knowing what to expect. So, um, those are some, some good things. Um, the Pluga challenge that we just did, um, for, for Pluga, this is the second time we've done something like this and it's been really, really great in terms of making us part of the baking community. You know, we, we did it once, I think, right when the pandemic started and again, a month or two ago, a month ago. And, uh, it was just based around give people something to do. Uh, we, we engaged so many fans, uh, when the pandemic started because people were just, you know, sitting around, uh, in their homes, especially during lockdown and wanting to be engaged somehow, give them something to do. So that's what this did. We asked fans in the first one to just use, use Pluga butter or show us a dish that you made using butter. It wasn't even necessarily Pluga because we wanted to be experts in the butter category and really open the aperture to anybody that wanted to participate. With the second one, what we did was we didn't even mention what kind of butter you needed to use or any butter at all. We just said, um, take a picture of the best cookies that you've made or are going to make, you know? It was very cookies focused, um, and it was homemade focused and it was, uh, it came out on homemade cookies day. So, uh, we run, we ran these for, I think, three weeks apiece and we built a huge following initially off of it. And we're continuing to build the following because the rules were set that you had to follow to be able to win. Um, and in the end, the prize was like, uh, 12 or 10 pounds of Pluga butter and kitchen tools. And so, um, this also gave us an opportunity to go in and engage with fans that were cooking and baking, regardless of if they were using our butter or not. And so it made us part of that community. We were able to positively engage with people and say, um, you know, Naomi would take like a half an hour a day at the most. Um, and go in and, and like people's, um, contributions, repost or re-story them, comment that things looked really yummy. And it just basically put us in kind of this party host, um, role, which is really what we think brands should be on social. You're the voice, you're the, you're the, the party host, so to speak, to bring other people in to have conversations around your brand. Um, so just something to keep in mind, the Pluga challenge, I would argue that that's, um, that's content that bridges the needs of us because we need followers and attention and fans and, and also the needs of consumers because they want to engage as well. And they want to win something at the end of the day. So everybody got what they wanted.
I'm just going to jump in for a second while you're drinking and say that part of, of the content strategy and part of what Pluga does in terms of content is that we do like featuring, um, bakers and pastry chefs that we know are using our products. So that if you're actually using Pluga in your bake shop, um, that you can reach out to us on RBA connects. And let me know, just send a message on RBA connects that you are using Pluga. And then a lot of times what we'll do is we'll feature one of the recipes from the bake shop and we'll feature, um, we'll um we'll feature the bakery, we'll feature you in some of our social media or on the website. And that's another way for you to be able to get more exposure. And it's good for us because um it shows that we really do have a connection with bakers and it gives us content.
Yeah, it's a good point, Linda. It also helped us to get um some relationships with influencers. You've probably heard that word, you know, people who have a high social following and that work with brands sometimes to help um recommend their products. Um and and get a little bit more trust behind um some products. And it's like um if a friend tells you that, you know, such and such cupcakes at whatever bakery are the best they've ever had, you're more likely to go try those than if you saw that actual bakery talking about how their cupcakes are amazing. So I think um influencers are good. And for, you know, local bakeries, you can pull people in your community. Maybe it's a newscaster. Maybe it's um, you know, a a writer or somebody uh who maybe has like a another business in town or something like that that's more well-known, and you can kind of build those relationships. So we did the Plugar challenge, we actually forged a few relationships without even really trying when they were actually doing our challenge. Um and so it's it ends up just being good. And the challenge here is something that you guys can do um as well. And it could be something as simple as um it's one that happens all the time. And it's like if you take a photo of one of our baked goods and tag us, um we're gonna pick one person at random every month to win a a kit from us or something like that. So you could have it just constantly running. And the caveat would be you have to follow us. And you know, you can you can announce that and just keep it going, and that's like something that keeps giving. Um I know we are kind of running out on time and I'm sad about that because we have a a bit more to go. So I'm just gonna kind of try to fly through some of this stuff if you guys don't mind. Um in terms of where content can come from, I don't want you to be doc um daunting. I don't want this to be daunting either. There are definitely places that you can look. Um maybe a note to make was is that we look at the website called nationaltoday.com. And you can look there and it tells you exactly what all the the holidays are, as weird as some of them are. You know, it can be like National Donut Day, which makes sense for us, or like Kiss a Chef Day or something like silly like that. And and now you know exactly what people are celebrating and there are hashtags behind those um always. And so what will happen is like National Donut Day is a huge one. So there's a ton of potential reach organically that you can get when you participate in that hashtag um and and do something special for that day. And the this is a tool that will help you plan in advance. Um holidays, obviously, social photo shoots, we really recommend this. Um here's an example. Every quarter, make a day, take a day where maybe your bakery is closed, it's a holiday, or maybe open extra early or something. And just go around with your iPhone or Android or whatever and take kind of interesting photos all over the bakery. Um get some photos of goods on plates, get a photo of your sign. Um grab a couple uh like a selfie of yourself behind the counter. Whatever you can do, just take a bunch of content and then put it in a library, edit it up, edit it with your phone or however you want to do it. And now you have a big library of content that you can pull from anytime. It's great to keep it on your phone because then you can post it as you're just sitting there. Um you don't, there's no need to kind of export it to desktop or anything. And then you just have all this content. It's just about making time for it. Um we, for one of our brands that we're working on, we did a a social photo shoot at their business and ended up getting a whole month of content just from that hour that we spent there. So something interesting. Um we also know that we want to get content from fans. Just ask for it, put it out there um that you wanna, you know, send us photos of um of yourself enjoying one of our famous muffins or cakes or whatever. And if we share yours, we'll give you a gift card or um a free birthday cake or how whatever you want to do. Um so it's really easy to to kind of think about these these ways of getting content. The other one is a content series, and we think about these like anchor posts. So these are things that we know that we're gonna constantly do. So the the fan quotes, we do those um every other Friday or or similar. Where we actually look through social, we pull quotes from people who have engaged positively. You could do that through Yelp, you could do that really anywhere. And then um and then post uh a tab, a template that you work in um where you post the quote and and kind of give a shout out to that fan who said it. Um Linda has helped us so much with doing pointers. So tips do really well on Instagram. Um and if you have more of kind of a home baker audience on Facebook, they would do well there too. And this is an example of adding value so that you can um help other people be great too. And so um the tips are have been great. And again, Linda's been so helpful with coming up with interesting ones for us. And then recipes are also really big. Um that might not be something that you do so much of when you've got your own bakery, but the tips could be really good. Um and then the challenge, just figure out ways that you can have this these engaging moments with your fans. And and those are ways that you can also bring in new followers. We talk a lot about brand, I I think, let me back up. I think brand content or business content can be bucketed in three ways. So you've got brand, and this is where your brand is highly visible. You maybe got a brand message like um we just, we just won an award, we're the best bakery in town. Or we have um the most, you know, clean ingredients in town or however you want to 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 tout yourself. This is that kind of message. Um fan fan content would be either UGC, user-generated content, um fan content or fan engagement things like the Plugar challenge that we talked about. And lifestyle content is often where you're not featuring your anything to do with your product at all. But you're more, you're more kind of showing how your products are in people's lives. So maybe it would be um so well, for this one, it would be that you put butter on popcorn, right? You don't really have to say it. And and so it's like bring Plugar into your movie nights. And there's ways I think you could do that when you're a bakery as well. Um although I can't think of like something at the top of my head. But um these are kind of the three buckets to keep in mind when you're writing kind of your own strategy. Knowing your social why is important as well. I'm just gonna leave this as a takeaway. It's really important to think about this um because it will help you to set your own strategy, as I kind of keep saying. Um and these are the big questions to ask, like when it comes to your your business or your bakery, who are you? What kind of um tactics do your um traits, rather, do you want to embody? What do you believe? I mean, that's really at the core. Um and it could be a statement like um we believe better baked goods lead lead to a more fulfilling life. Or the purpose, why do you exist? Why are you here? Why are you on social? What are you aiming to do to introduce more people to our products? And then the proposition is about how you add value for people. What are you going to do to make sure that people keep coming back? What what's the thing that you're gonna do to add value? Um insights we've talked about, this is just an example of um some insights that we pull just through Facebook where you just can go to that tab and easily see what you're getting for a certain amount of time. And there's also a post level in insights where you can see what posts are doing the best. Um and you can look at it by engagement, you can look at it by date posted. Um these are, this is a great place to kind of do that stuff to figure out what's working and what's not and how you can pivot. Let's say you are posting your specials board every Sunday and it just isn't working. It's not getting any engagement. At that point, you look at your insights and you say, okay, I can either make a decision to try a different day or try shooting it a different way or talking about it a different way. Or you cut doing it for a while and bring in something that you think that people will uh like and engage with. Um and then coming up to the five essential ingredients, these are really simple, right? We wanted to make them really simple because um we think that it's important to be able to actually um, you know, take action on them. So when it comes to um these five ingredients, we've got value, humanity, consistency, spontaneity and paid. These are the five things that if you can really master them um and show that you understand them, you know, as a brand or business, you'll actually do really well on social. We talked a lot about content. Um content is the thing, right? And the the thing that we need to keep in mind is that marketing and and branding and um advertising, it used to always be about getting people to do what we want them to do. But really, times have changed and now businesses and brands have to help people do what they want to do. So um just kind of keep that in mind. It's sort of an a a roundabout way to say like it can't be about us all the time. Um it has to be about us together with our customers. And so this little value-adding hexagon is something to keep in mind um when it comes to content. Adding value means being helpful or useful, being inclusive. Maybe that's something where we say, um we're gonna, we're asking our fans, what's what should be our next cupcake flavor? Comment below and we will pick our favorite and make a cupcake um just based off of your suggestion. It brings people into the fold. Um inspiring, that's a given, entertaining, humorous, informative. All of these things will make sure uh that that people engage. So let's say you were gonna post something that was just your business tagline. That's obviously not adding value for anyone but you. So we need to kind of figure out how we how we do that. Um a quick test, I think Naomi brought this up so well um before, is would you share it if you were a customer? Try to take yourself out of your ownership for a second. Is this something that you think that you people would like? You know your customers, they come in, um you know, they buy from you, and you can kind of ask yourself that that quick question. Um humanity, we kind of talked about this a lot already, but it's really important. Remember that social is a place for humans. It literally was based off of humans wanting to connect. So we have to be human too, especially when you consider that um we're competing, as Naomi said, with people with other people's friends and their family um that are posting, you know, cute baby pics and dog pics and things like that. So how do we break through and how do we make sure that we're seen? It's really by showing off who you are and showing that we're human. I mean, um it can be as simple as in when you know people are going through a hard time, posting a message of of hope, posting a message of um we're here for you, we're gonna offer um you know, day-old baked goods for free or something. Um there's so many things you can do, but it's just kind of tapping into that. And um if I know the baking community, they do this quite well. So it shouldn't be anything um, you know, too too tough. Um consistency is big, so this is uh around planning. Um I don't want you guys to get afraid of the thought of planning. It doesn't need to be that serious. It can literally be you in front of a calendar, looking at a national day site like National Today or whatever you'd like to do, looking at your own or thinking about your own, um maybe the fact that you know you're gonna make a new a new line of product um in September or something. Keep your priorities in mind on one side and keep kind of humans and the way they live and what they celebrate on the other side. Get your calendar and just topically write, um say you're gonna do one or two posts a week. Maybe it'll be one that you do organic and maybe one that you're gonna you're gonna put paid behind because it's gonna drive um new product information, um new new new, anything new, anything newsworthy, anything that's a like a a deal for anyone. Um sometimes it can be as simple as like, you know, ten percent off if you stop in today, that kind of that kind of stuff. And do two posts a week um and go through and figure out what those might be. And then that's something that you can fix later on the road. If you see that nobody's engaging with the organic posts, okay, well, let's now do split that budget and do two posts, maybe ten dollars each and make sure that people see it. Um spontaneity is really important, I think, um that we that we look like we're not like sitting there with a planning calendar, you know? That's part of the humanity piece. And so uh it's where humanity and that consistency meet together. Um one of the best things that that I ever um heard in social was I I went to a talk that Twitter did and they said, plan to be spontaneous, create repeatable brilliance. And I think that's so important. If you want to make sure that we've got those anchor posts, those posts that are like content series, we we plan for them. Maybe you have a Fan Friday that you're gonna do where you're gonna pull a fan post every Friday. You know you're gonna do that, so that's one check mark every week for that. What are your other ones? Um maybe you've got holidays in there too. Leave yourself some breathing room for if uh somebody that's like a local celebrity stops in. Or to um to if something is kind of occurring, let's say something happens in the news where um maybe somebody achieved making the biggest cookie and it's on the news everywhere. You could kind of figure out how you play off that and have something um on your your timeline. Like their cookie might be the biggest, but where's ours is the best or something like that. It's kind of showing that you're listening. And you're listening to your customers, but you're also listening, you know, to life in general. Um so one of the best examples, and I won't spend too much time here, of real time, um what we call real-time posting was when uh Pharrell at the Grammys wore that big crazy hat and it looked like the Arby's hat. And Arby's tweeted right away, um Pharrell stole our hat or something, something similar. And it got a ton of retweets and likes and comments because it looked like Arby's was listening and watching the Grammys just like all of us. So it's just something to kind of keep in mind. Um three things to keep in mind when you do kind of uh join in on the conversation a little bit is just ask yourself like, does this show off our expertise? Would we, if this got shared like a hundred times, would we be proud of that? And just sort of give yourself a little bit of a check before you um join in the conversation. Um paid, so I use dollar buns here. I hope I get a little bit of credit for that one. This one is just about paid. I don't want you guys to be um overwhelmed by this either. It literally is as much as like ten, fifteen dollars behind posts that you really want to make sure people see. And you can start by just boosting if that's comfortable to you. Um where you just boost it to, you hit the boost button, you put in your credit card info, you hit go. And it's you click the button that says it's for uh fans and friends of your fans. And that will hit your inner circle of your fans and that outside circle too that don't even engage or know you about you maybe. And so it's kind of like a nice, comfortable way to to get started. As you get more comfortable, you might decide you want to make different audiences. And it's easy to do, but it looks it looks hard because there's a lot of small type and there's a lot of options. But don't let that fool you. And I think you can get in there and decide that we're gonna have an audience that, let's say, is um older, older people, you know, forty to sixty-five, and we're gonna talk to them in a really different way than we might talk to younger people interested in the bakery. And you can start doing that. And and I would say you want to look at your insights to guide how you might do that. Um and even talk to your, talk to your customers too. What are kind of the things that they want to see? And then take those things that are doing really well and hit the gas and put that ten dollars behind that. If that works out really well, try twenty next time. Um try to kind of create that repeatable brilliance, as we've said. There's a good rule for doing this, and I mentioned a little bit before, but the effort that it took you to create the post should probably be the effort or the budget that you put behind it. So let's say you get together with a team and you make a video. Well, that definitely needs to have paid behind it because you put all this attention and probably money and budget into making a video. If you took a photo, a quick photo, almost even blurry photo, you know, on your phone of your specials board, don't put paid behind that. That's just like a, I kind of sometimes think about social, organic social like a bet. You're laying a bet down and you're seeing what will happen. When you, when you have the right copy, the right hashtags, you don't need paid behind something that's kind of um quick like that.
Yeah, or if it's a big moment too, Jen, like say it's wedding season, it's coming up and you do a lot of wedding cakes. You know, and you've got a beautiful photo of that and it's really important that you drive those sales up. You know, that's something you'd put behave behind as well, you know, something like that.
Yeah. Um managing comments, we won't go through this, I don't think, because I we're really running out of time and I want you to be able to ask questions if you have any. But I put in here um an example response plan um for you if you want to use it. Um this is one that we use for Plugar. Basically, the gist of this is you really want to pay attention to anybody that has a negative experience. Excuse me, and you want to pay attention to anybody that has a positive experience. Everybody in between that, it's up to you what kind of like level of energy you want to put into that. Um obviously, you want to answer all your messages. That's an important thing. But um if somebody is making a neutral comment, if somebody is making a joke about your brand, if it's off-topic, uh those things you can choose to ignore if you like. Um and when it comes to positive posts, um again, the effort that it took for the person to say it should scale with the effort it takes you to respond. So if somebody is just like, you know, love, love this bakery, cool, like it. If somebody writes a paragraph about their experience with your bakery, that deserves a comment back. And you can just say, oh, we love to hear this so-and-so. Thanks so much for sharing your story. Hope to see you soon. This helps you, this plan will help you to have some rules and some some process behind how you do this. It can even be something if you want to hire someone at intern level or something to manage your your um cut, you know, community, this could be something that you give them. But in general, really focus on that effort scale and the positive experience versus negative experience. Everything else in the middle can often be noise. Um so we talked about this plan. The it really starts to get hairy when you have a million back and forth between someone. We we kind of see a lot of that with some of our um our other clients where they kind of just want some attention and they just want to kind of keep you going. The best thing to do is to just um have one response. And if they need more, tell them to reach out to you or get their information. Um it just ends up being kind of this back and forth that nobody needs. Uh it's good also to reward customers. You saw that text post that we had that said where someone was like best butter ever. That's something where you could reach out to that customer behind the scenes and give them a thank you and maybe a gift card or something like that. Um here, I've included strategy worksheets for you, examples of Um here, I've included strategy worksheets for you, examples of say our social content pillars um and how some of this would look if you wanted to make your own. And then this is like the backbone of creating a social strategy. So you could write down your, what you believe, why we're here, how do we add value, who are we talking to? How often do we post? How do we sound? Um how, what will we create and how do we measure success? Those are just some simple things that you can write down. And I included um for the pillars and your social voice, I included some empty um or blank slides for that at the back of this deck if you wanna try to do that exercise. Those are the, that's the backbone of kind of creating a social strategy. So in summary, we really just wanna see you guys um prep and plan so that you can be kind of like repeatable with the great stuff and not spend so much time trying to figure out what are we gonna do this week. Um and so that's always a a good thing to remember. Be human, obviously, you guys, I'm sure you're awesome and people love seeing you at your bakery and they're gonna wanna hear that through your social. Properly invest in, you know, posts that you want to make sure get seen. Test what works and what doesn't through your insights. Make sure that you're engaging regularly with your fans to bring in new fans. And really make sure that when you're posting content, you think about the end, the end user. You think about the person that's gonna see that and try to bridge between what what you guys need to accomplish and what they wanna see. Um so that's really, that's really it. And I know we went a little bit over, um if anybody has any questions, we're happy to to answer them. But um I don't know if people had to drop off or or not. Anybody have anything specifically?
And then just I was gonna say unmute your lines, but go ahead.
Oh, gotcha, I have a question, I'll uh try to maybe get back on camera. Um so one thing that I struggle with is um differentiate, differentiator, and I can't say it. That was hard. Um myself, from my brand, and I know that it's important for me as the owner um to be a face and I am. We're a small town, everybody knows who I am, everybody knows I own the place, my customers all know me, that we've had a ten-year-old business. But I don't wanna be the brand.
Yeah.
I want my dessert, I want my food to be the brand and to bring, and and so I don't, I struggle with that. How do I be both? And also, I think, I I unfortunately, I think my customers wanna see more of me. But I don't necessarily want them to see me more, I want them to focus on my food.
Well, you've tied yourself with your food and the success of your food probably. So there's a way I think you can back out of that um by making sure that you're writing your copy in the omniscient we, you know, like, don't say I or me, talk about we as the brand, which you might already be doing. Um and then make sure that you save some time sometimes to kind of check in, uh make make a content series that's about you. What are you, just so that you can hit those people that wanna see you there. Because a lot of times, especially in a small town, they're probably coming to you because they just love you and they wanna support somebody real, you know? So you take the we and really make the con, the content about we as a bakery and don't even talk about I unless you make a content series that's all about Cara. So let's say um you do something maybe once a month or you do a video of you once a month where you're literally like, you've got your selfie stick or something and you're like, hey, it's Cara, I just wanna talk quick about some of the things that I'm really loving about the bakery this month. And you can just kind of show people around, you can say, like, I really um, I love this kind of cupcake that we made and here's the story behind it, and you're just kind of checking in. Um but you don't need to, you're in control, you don't have to make it all about you at every every turn. Um but especially with people staying home more and not coming in probably as much as they were if there wasn't a pandemic, they do wanna make sure that they that they see you and check in with you. It's just about allowing certain times for that to be and planning for that. Um and so I would say start using that we more and start talking, you know, through that. And like you could even have a content series that was like Keeping Up With Cara and it would be like, you know, um twice a month. And you would just do this fun video where you're checking in with your people and you're you're sharing that. So I think that could be a start.
That's cute, thank you very much.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Well, I know we're just a little bit over, which is fine because I feel like this is the information everybody really needs. So I never opposed when these town hall, top town halls go a little over um when the, you know, the message is really good. So and you know, we deal with bakers all the time and like I said, you know, there are some that do this really well and there are some that need the help. So um we're gonna, this this entire town hall was recorded and we'll make sure that people see it because I think there's a lot of value to what you both mentioned, um you know, just even easy tips. And I love the the, don't be afraid of social media. I think there's a lot of bakery owners who are like, oh, it's just one more thing I have to do, like ah, such a pain in the butt, you know, like, don't be afraid of it, get your calendar out. You know, it doesn't have to be fancy, just make sure
I mean, we hear that so often, Bernadette, like, oh, it's just one more thing I have to do. But let let's say that you guys um were to do something like a challenge on your own and it completely blew up and you had like fifteen hundred new followers and so much love. Like, that's great, isn't it? And you took the time, maybe you took like an hour out of your day to just create an asset, put it out there, you know? Um so it's just about when you do have the time, do it right and do it well. And don't think that you need to post every day, that that's not the, that doesn't need to be the rule of thumb. In general, we see like twice a day being completely enough. As long as those two times you post, you put some effort into that and figure out what is it gonna be? And it literally could be a beautiful shot of your specials board and some copy around that. And the other one could be something planned that really engages fans somehow. Or a challenge or a gift card giveaway, just at least plan for six posts a month. At minimum, get it on your calendar and just um look at hashtags. I I do recommend following hashtags on Instagram especially. We were able to grow Pluga's following just by doing that. We were, we were following like, you know, Baker Life and just things like that. So that every time we were logged on and we saw people, we just would like, 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 or we would say, oh, this looks beautiful or this looks fun or whatever, and we would get people following us like that. Because you're taking the effort to to engage. So it's just like a little bit of effort can go a long way. And if you try all this stuff and you still can't get there, well, at least you tried. And you can kind of, you know, maybe bring in an expert or two or a content person or, you know, oftentimes there are a lot of young people. Exactly, young people that wanna do this work and they're really good at it because they grew up with it. So don't be afraid of that either.
Yeah, delegation is a huge part of social that I think is a good thing. You know, you guys are business owners, you've got the books, you've got the products, you've got planning. You know, this, I could see, you know, how that would just weigh on you as yet another thing. And it is a big job, you know, if it wasn't a big job, Jen and I wouldn't be doing this work, you know?
Wouldn't be employed.
Yeah, so please don't be afraid to delegate some of this stuff. I think it is important that you kind of get those building block, those core things in place, you know, such as cadence, uh such as uh some content series ideas, uh who are you? You know, those big questions, those are for you to answer. And our strategy, we look at a lot as kind of like um a a GPS or a Bible of sorts that you can align everybody on your team uh with what the move is and what the plan is and what we're doing. And don't be afraid to delegate some of that stuff to somebody on your staff that is excited and interested. And then, you know, keep an eye and make sure it's all good.
Well, good, that's a great point. One thing I thought about is if you wanna engage people, you can even make like a cute sign or something in your bakery behind the counter that says like, share your photos to hashtag your bakery name. Uh and we'll pick a random winner each month to win a gift pack, you know, or something like that. So that when people go in and they're buying their dozen, whatever, they can go, oh, I should take a, you know, share a photo of my yummy stuff. Because it it actually makes them look like, you know, everybody wants followers, everybody, if you're on social, you want engagement. So I'm gonna take a picture of that great donut and I'm gonna tag you and then I might even win something, you know? So you can make it kind of cute and then that gives you something to talk about with your customer. Like, oh, hey, if you really enjoyed it, you know, make sure you take a picture and share, we do this thing every month.
One of the things we have suggested to our bakers too is um, you know, check in right now on Facebook for a free cookie. So before you even, check in before you check out, like that kind of thing, like, you know, something where it says you're here then your friends and family see that, um you know, then your bakery is there, so it gets out to their group, so. Um but again, that's super simple and nothing to be intimidated or afraid to do, so.
Yeah, the worst thing is that it's like a tree falling in the forest, no one heard it, whatever, you move on. You can even delete it if you didn't like the post, you know, you can delete it. So really, don't be afraid. I think we look at these influencers and things and we think, oh, it's so beautiful. We look at these other brands that are just going to the nines about it and we don't have to do that. Like, we're in a totally different category. Um we're not Coca-Cola where we can't delete something after we post it. You guys can, you have that freedom, you know? So it's just about, just try it. And if it doesn't work, then don't do it again and try something else. But you'll never know, you know? And what if a social post gets you a new fan for life, gets you a new customer for life? Those are the things that are important, right?
Right, very good. Well, thank you both very much and thank you to Pluga to, you know, being our our sponsor of this town hall and and bringing Jen and Naomi here and um, you know, we really do appreciate it. I think, like I said, this was super valuable and I think our bakers will get a lot out of it. Um and thank you for your time and thanks to everybody who took the time to be on this today, so.
Thank you guys very much.
We're gonna end the call here and um hope everybody has a great rest of your afternoon.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.